Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome everybody to the August nineteenth council meeting. All six of my colleagues, myself are here along with the auditor Kathy. And college meeting's order. Mary Odell, I'll put you first.
Okay, first of all, we're working with the developer on what they call the Maple Crest project, which is a housing project behind Kroger's on Apache Drive. There's a hundred eighty-four units of multi-type housing there, single living, garden flats, condos, senior living condos, apartments, townhouses. If you haven't, if you're not familiar with the Collins Equity Group, they've done projects all over the northern Indiana, probably even down to Elwood, I think. We went up and we've had, this has been a year-long process to work with them on this project, a lot of back and forth in the last few months. We went up and met with them at their project, Centennial Cross, Centennial Crossing in Plymouth. We were shocked actually when we drove in how nice it was, it's very, very nice. The houses look, look high-end, but they're, they're vertically integrated developer. In other words, they have their own excavation team, they have their own hardware store, their own lumberyard, so they can build market rate a lot less than typical market rate goes for. So this is a price point our community needs. And you know, as you maybe are familiar, the housing study we did a couple of years ago showed we needed six hundred units of housing in Fulton County over the next five years. So we've got the two Lytec awards, the two apartment complexes, the sixty, fifty-five and older there on College and, which has already started, the one on the, behind Arbor Woods will be starting in October. But this is, this is a very nice project, good location. Anyway, having said all that, through the numbers, and I was not aware exactly what process we had to take, but we had to form an economic development commission. And my first thought, well, we have that, we have a redevelopment commission, and now it's something that, it's another whole layer the government says you gotta have, especially when it comes to economic development bonds. That's just about all I know about it. I talked to Ron about this, and he said, maybe you need to explain it, and I said, well, you're probably as good at it as I do. But I will tell you what little I know, its sole purpose is to carry out the responsibilities under Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash eleven point nine and twelve. So well, this morning, I thought I'll just read up on that, and that should make it very clear. I'm actually dumber having done so. But that body is generally, it does not receive any funds, it's basically put together for approval, it kinda takes some of the burden off of the redevelopment commission, it's a statutory thing that has to occur for this process to take place. It's, it's something that may not meet for two years, I don't know, may not meet for five years, may meet six months from now, I don't know. But part of it was I had to appoint three of people that live in the city or do business in the city. The city council had to appoint one, and the county council has to appoint one, sit on a five-member board. The requirements are, you either need to live in the city or operate a business that has a city address, which I think we're whittled down now to two guys. I don't know if anybody else qualifies. And it's you too. So, and the other requirement that I have is, I need you at a nine o'clock meeting in the morning. Because that's, and I contacted you, I think, the day after you had your last meeting, and you said, we don't meet till the nineteenth, and we had this meeting already put on the schedule for the twentieth. So what I need is that person to be able to show up tomorrow for the meeting, and listen, we do have our legal team, which is Creek to Ball, a representative coming up to explain this further, and talk, we do have the attorney from the Collins Equity Group gonna be there as well, and if you got any questions, we can run through. But it's, it's basically just a formality that we have to go through. So I'm asking the council to appoint someone, and I think by default, it falls on you guys as stewards, if you wanna volunteer, and they approve it, fine, but I really need you at the meeting in the morning, so is that working either one of your schedules?
Is the meeting at eight-thirty or nine?
Well, we have an RDC meeting at eight-thirty, the EDC meeting is gonna for nine.
Make this meeting and Thursday's meeting, and I'm in Logan's port.
I could potentially, yeah, I think so.
Like I said, it shouldn't last too long, I mean, if you can be there at eight-thirty, there'll be more information probably rolled out, because that's our RDC meeting, and then right following that at nine is our EDC meeting where we vote on this, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions, please don't ask too much tactical, because I won't be able to answer it, but.
What's that acronym again, the R?
It's called the Economic Development Commission. And in my mind, why can't the RDC handle this, but they say no. So I've been, actually been trying to figure out the main difference, but I had lunch with someone today to kinda explain a little more of it, but I still, it's still kinda foggy, but I'm just going through the steps the government tells me I have to take.
The information you sent me was the reason I called you and said, hey.
It's the same thing right here, and I don't know anymore than I did when I talked to you. You know, as this process goes on, I'll learn the differences, but it looks like there's so much overlap in these two commissions that I don't see why, you can't have just one, but that's, they tell me otherwise, so. But it should be a little bit more clear tomorrow. So Chase, you say you can make the meeting, you say you can't?
I can, I've rescheduled my whole week to make this meeting and Thursday's meeting.
Okay, so I, I'm gonna ask the council to nominate Chase to fill that position.
Well, then I'll entertain a motion. Chase, thank you, but I'll entertain a motion for Chase to be our one vote on the EDC.
Yep.
That's our move. Any move, second, Pete Sack is all in favor? Seven, zero.
Thank you. One other thing, the water project slash industrial park kickoff is gonna be a groundbreaking on September sixteenth at ten AM, out on the south side of the Machiana Truck Stop, that's where our tower, water tower is going to go. You're all are invited, and we have state legislators, hopefully some federal legislators, some news stations, there's news stations, we're trying to get some good advertising, Commonwealth Engineering's heading up the, the groundbreaking, possibly the governor can come up, so you can maybe bend his ear, but politely, please. But if you can make it, that we'd love to have you, but that's gonna be kinda the kickoff for the water project, industrial park and so forth, so.
What time is that again?
Ten AM.
Was that September sixteenth?
September sixteenth.
Okay.
So. Anybody have any questions for me before I step down on anything?
Anybody?
Where's it at?
Um, it's just on the west side of, or south, south side of, oh, City Hall, City Hall. Sorry.
We're fine.
And they, they will be starting the construction for the water tower, they've got three different contractors working, one on lead pipe removal, one on the water project, and one on the tower construction, all probably will start in September, so.
Towers is curious.
What's that?
How many gallon towers?
Seven fifty. We're five hundred short, actually, of our daily use in the summertime of having enough in the year, and the extra two fifty was cheap gallons, and it'll have, it'll be black and gold with same colors that high school used, it'll say Rochester, home of the zebras, have a zebra head on, so, and be lit up at night, so just write off thirty-one, you'll see it, it'll be, it'll be a good plug for the community. It was a needed thing, and we wanted to go big enough to take care of some growth, so. The only other thing I might add, the McDonald Drive, that's been talked about for a long time, they're starting that first week in September, and should be done by the first November with the access and the Walmart, so.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe, see you in the morning.
See you in the morning.
Don?
I have nothing, unless you guys have questions on my budget, if I'm doing here, but I have nothing.
I think we pretty well destroyed everybody's budget, huh?
I'm good with that.
You're not alone, so there. Travis, please.
I don't have a whole lot.
I did email out the reports yesterday, were there any questions on the Elijah reports? Yesterday morning, we had seventy-six inmates. Seventy-six inmates, last month we invoiced for ninety-eight thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. Of the seventy-six inmates, yesterday morning, twenty-eight we were holding for Grant County, four were DOC and eleven feds. Grant County came and got thirty of their inmates, they're in the process of pulling back a lot of their inmates due to funding issues with our council, holding the out-of-county inmates. I don't foresee them taking the rest of their inmates back, but they did take approximately fifty percent of them back, so I think we'll probably stay right around the twenty-eight to thirty range with them until they get their funding sources figured out for the holding of out-of-county inmates. We got a check for the total Durango for fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars, that was minus the five thousand dollar deductible. However, it was uninsured motorists, so we got forty-seven hundred dollars of that coming back. So the grand total that we're gonna get from Liberty Mutual is nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars for the, if I said Durango, I apologize, it was a Dodge Ram that was totaled on July third. So is what I would like to do is deposit that money, appropriate it in a garage and motor, and then with your guys' permission, use the nineteen thousand, four hundred and seventy-five dollars to purchase a new vehicle, for detective vehicle.
I don't think nineteen thousand four is gonna cover.
It's not, whatever we go over, it'll have to be a used vehicle, whatever we go over, I'll handle with commissary, so. You guys have been gracious enough throughout the year, helping me out with things, and you know, commissary's doing well enough that, we're not looking for anything new, but we're looking between probably, probably the twenty-five thousand dollar range per vehicle. It'll be used as an unmarked detective vehicle, so we won't have a lot of upfitting that needs to be done with it, so.
Comments, Ben, is anyone?
Just replacing a truck?
Yeah.
Didn't have before.
Yeah, replacing a vehicle that got totaled, so.
Commissary didn't cost us extra.
Nope, it's not costing taxpayers anything. You know, ideally, we would still have the truck, so, because it, it was a good running truck, and you know, it was completely outfitted and everything, but you know, crap happens, so.
Were able to save some of the?
We got all the equipment off of it, you know, we'll be able to reuse, reuse lights and radios and things like that, but, you know, at the end of the day, especially on, you know, vehicles, you know that, as soon as, soon as we get them, they're not worth what, you know, we had the Durango that was totaled out on thirty-one when, when sailors were still here, and it only had like, you know, just a few hundred miles on it, and you know, we lost twelve grand just as soon as it, soon as it was hit, so, I mean, it just, that's what it is, so.
Any concerns about it? Say go for it.
Okay, so I'm able to purchase a vehicle for nineteen four seventy-five out of Garage and Motor?
Yeah, yeah, because you're gonna replace that, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have, I'll have Amber do the appropriation back in the Garage and Motor for that then, so. I think that's all I've got, unless you guys have any questions or anything for me?
Do you know anything about Grant County, I mean, until they decide what they're gonna do?
I, from what I understand, they're in a dispute, the council and the sheriff is, you know, the council says we don't have money, the sheriff says we don't have beds, so they're kind of in an impasse right now. You know, Grant County, at the end of the day, it's a lose-lose situation, because they're gonna pay one way or another, whether, whether it's pay us to hold them or pay for their, their class actions, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna pay, so. My hope is, and talking to some of them, that they're gonna come to terms here in the next couple of months, as far as, as far as their overcrowding issue, and at least, you know, getting, at least getting them to a comfortable level, so, of housing, but, you know, even at that, we're still looking at invoicing sixty thousand a month for out-of-county and federal inmates. We just signed the ICE contract last month, or the MOU last month, so we will start holding some ICE inmates. I don't expect that to be a huge revenue generator, but it's just another, another piece of the, another piece of the pie, so.
And DOC, they behind still?
Oh, yeah, we haven't received any money from them since, and I just checked on that. I think it was May of twenty-four, thirty-one thousand dollars roughly is what they owe us. We thought, sheriffs as a whole thought it was pretty interesting that they came up with a thousand beds for ICE, but they can't meet their obligations to the county sheriffs across the state, so, interesting, so.
Anything else for Travis? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chris?
I just have a couple things, nothing important. I got permission from the commissioners last night to purchase its artificial intelligence through priority dispatch, which is what we do our protocols through, you guys have heard me talk about that a lot lately. So what this is, is when we're training somebody, we spend a lot of time role-playing, me as the caller, you as the call taker, and giving scenarios back and forth. I've been waiting for this to come out a while, and they finally released it. What that does, obviously, our call taker's the call taker, but artificial intelligence will actually play the role to do like live calls for them to work on, medical, police and fire type calls. It's just like you're sitting there talking to somebody, it's really, it's really cool, so, I think that's gonna help us, this is different than quality assurance, but at the end of the call, it will score you and show you where you might be falling short. So for example, if I have somebody that's doing really bad on domestic calls, I can actually go into this portal and assign the specific dispatcher multiple domestic violence calls, that way we can improve the skills to make sure that we are in compliance and training. It's gonna be a great training tool, it actually goes towards their continuing ed points, I guess you could say, also. So it's a dual-action type program, so I'm really looking forward to that improving and cutting back some time on training, no matter, it's not just for new dispatchers, this is gonna be even for me to sit there and make sure I'm staying fresh on protocols that I may not use often, so, I'm really excited about that. I finished reviews for the employees, actually delivered those to the auditor's office today. I did quality assurance all weekend, it's a lot to keep up on, so. It's rough, I mean, we're all having a hard time kinda getting acclimated to the different way of doing things, but with each call, they're all starting to get a little bit better, including myself, taking a couple calls, like you can feel yourself wanting to revert back to your old-school ways, so, definitely growing pains, but the people who are doing quality assurance on my quality assurance are happy with where we're at, we're about average, including me, that's evidently lost my skills of quality assurance, so we're all trying to tidy ourselves back up. The tower, the HVAC light keeps tripping, the building and everything's fine, every time it trips, I go out and, and check to make sure everything is running good. There's two units out there, I'm not an HVAC person, but I'm kinda suspicious, and we're still looking into it, but I think when one unit switches its lead to the second unit, I think there's a problem with the switch, so both units are working, I just think that when it goes to make that switch to the other unit, something's triggering the alarm. So everything seems to be running good, I got people looking into it to see what we need to do, maybe a switch or something's out, but, good news is, it's functioning perfectly, and we've had Core out there numerous times just to check things and make sure that, I mean, it's kind of a big deal, that building is, so. But aside from that, I don't have anything else.
Said the commissioner gave you permission, you didn't say how you're gonna pay for and how much?
Yep, so it's a three-year contract, the, actually, it's two and a half years, let's see, the first year's forty-five hundred, and then the other two is six thousand each year, and I didn't bring my paper, I don't wanna make myself look like an idiot. It's coming out of, it's not programs, but it's, gosh, I'm on the spot. I, I'll have to pull the, I'll have to pull, I'm not sure right this second, but it's in the budget.
What did you say?
I don't think we talked about which budget.
Put it in the training or something, continuing ed, yeah.
Well, I'll, I can tell you before the meeting.
She didn't give you a fund last week.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll have it.
Just email it to us, so we got an idea of what.
Yep, sorry.
No, that's fine, we just, we just set.
It makes sense, you asked that question, yeah.
Hour-long budget thing on, on how not good things are looking, and that's why we need to keep track of every dollar we spend, because.
Absolutely, I have my own ledger, I've made up and keep track of everything, so, I'll get that to you right off the top of my head, I.
That's fine.
I, on the spot, can't think about it, so.
Any other questions for Brittany? Thank you.
All right, I'll let you know ASAP, thank you.
I appreciate that. Michael?
Few points for you. The, as I've told you in the past, the regional group has been working with a consulting firm on the lending money, and we've been waiting for a consulting group to come together, finish out a regional arts and culture program. That's going to be, or strategy, I'm sorry, that's gonna be released October the seventh in a meeting in Logan's Port from five to seven PM at the Vibrant Center right downtown. What this really does is, that will free up the blight removal money that we can start using and put programs together on. I have three projects in three of the different towns, I'm working on a fourth project here in Rochester, gonna try and combine it for the blight removal program, and put that all in and get that started as soon as possible. I don't know what the mayor said, so I may be repeating something here, but as far as the industrial park is concerned, I sent, we've had two requests for letters of support and commitment to some structures out in the park, and some development plans, those were sent off this afternoon to Stephen Ray at the Planning Commission, and once the state approves those, accepts them, we're probably just weeks away from announcement of getting two and a half million dollars for the park, and for the infrastructure for the industrial, for the water tower, moving it across and doing whatever they have to do out there, so. That will give us, along with the Little Zebby's money, five million dollars in ready-to-munis as soon as that's committed. I sit with a, a group on the Childcare Coalition Group, they're doing a study, trying to work with the business community, I'm their liaison on that project, and there's a list been compiled of people who we feel that need to be involved in that group, that list will, those people will be invited to another meeting pretty soon, Chase, you're on that group. So, yeah, I'm working, if you haven't been out, to Fourteenth and College, Hawkins Homestead is under construction, they've got the foundation laid out, one of the structures is probably three-quarters of the way up at this point, it's all rough, it's open, there's nothing there. The Collins Group, which is going out along Apache Drive, is supposed to get underway any day at this point in time. Working with another group, we talked this morning, that will go in around the pilot area at this point, we're working with them to get them started. Arbor Woods should start some, there's a group going in behind Arbor Woods in that field that's back there, and they should be getting started anytime within the next probably sixty, eighty days. Of the three, Hawkins Homestead, the Collins Group, and Arbor Woods, that's about a thirty million dollar investment in apartments and homes in the next probably eighteen months at this point. I think that's about it.
Questions or anything for Michael? You said you're working with some other towns besides Rochester on some projects?
Mm-hmm.
What towns are you working with?
Fulton, Kewana, and Akron.
Who else? Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Ron, it's computer software, there's forty-five thousand in the budget right now for that with zero expenditure.
Thank you. I won't leave you to last, Amy. You want, do you want, or you want John to step up?
I will step up, I have to, I have to plan it through a meeting here.
I figured you were sitting there kinda nervous.
Well, I was looking, I was just texting Mike Canada, like, are you going? Just in case.
So it's our lucky day, you have to keep it short.
I do. I always try to keep it short.
I was implying that.
Here is the updated, you're welcome, you have the updated information for the next couple of months for the Beeman Home. We are continuing to work in partnership with the Beeman Home. Dave Summers is working to try to help me to bring them here more consistently, to find a home. There is a bingo, and I keep forgetting that, that they will be having to raise funds, it is for all three locations, but if you are inclined to play bingo, and you have free time, oh, gosh, it's not right there, it will be in October, I'll come back and tell you guys about that, so, I had it memorized yesterday, but not today, so, just like Brittany, too many things on the brain. So there's a bingo coming up, they're hoping to raise money to increase services, unfortunately, they were cut in some of those federal cuts with funding, so. We'll have a meeting Friday at seven o'clock to talk about the next steps for the Warming Center. Trent, myself and Beth met this morning talking about things for the city, trying to figure out what we could do to make that a little bit easier for everybody, so we'll see. Dawn Sewell has agreed to host a Zoom call for us, to try to help us to move that forward. Last but not least, I believe, well, two other things, tomorrow we have free lunch for everybody at the Outlet Youth Center, the library is closed for renovation, so we had to move our meeting to the Outlet Youth Center at eleven-thirty, free lunch. We will be hosting ForC Health to talk about mental health, and that brings me to my last point, which is, we will have a mental health chat. It was originally scheduled for the twentieth, but the library today had let me know that that room may not be available, so we may have to move the date and the location, but that will be in October sometime, and we will be discussing seasonal depression, so we're hoping to start the mental health chats just through this, through the holiday season and into the first part of the year, because a lot of people struggle with that, just to highlight mental health and help people with resources, so. We're working hard still, getting ready to do a new update on our brochure as well, because we've had some daycares close and other organizations be impacted with funding, and so change hours and such, so we will be printing new one of those at the end of the year. Anything else that you can think of?
Anything? Thank you.
Trying to just get me gone, aren't you?
Thank you. I could say, say the best for last.
Well, yes, and I would.
John?
Hopefully.
See, I knew you were gonna say that.
Gotta keep it in touch.
Set her up, Ron.
I know, she always does.
We have a whole lot, but, you guys, they got their chip seal completed this year, so they've been patching holes, grading gravel roads, mowing, patching, doing that kinda stuff. They've been laying some millings with the paver here lately. Things been going pretty good. Community crossings, E and B, they've wedged two fifty south, five fifty south, and nine fifty. They plan to come back in the next week or so and put the top coat on, finish those up, so, they're coming along nicely. Bridge one sixty-one, that's on eight hundred west there by Grass Creek, they've got it tore out, they've got north bank, the pylons in, and I think they've about got the south bank done. and I think they've about got the south bank done today. So they'll be ready to start putting the structure up here soon. Plan is for October 1st to have it open. I think they might be ahead of that, so which would be good. So back to chip sealing. We was in the middle of our chip seal this year, and our distributor went down. Plaski County was very gracious, and they bought a new distributor last year. They still had their old one. They loaned us their old one. They got us through. We was able to finish the season out, so we owe them a big thank you. But back to our distributor. It's outdated. It's, we can't get parts for it. The computer system's outdated. It's a 1999, I believe. We went and looked. So we've got two options, or three. We could not chip seal. I don't think that's too wise. We could buy a new distributor. Man, you're looking at about $300,000 for that. Or we can upgrade the one we have, and it's going to cost us, I think, $94,000, some change. Basically, what the upgrade would do, it'd be everything new on that truck except for the chassis, the truck itself, and the tank. So it'd be a new chip, computer, all-new system. It'd be a modern, modern unit. The truck itself only has 33,000 miles on it, so it's in pretty decent shape. So I guess what I'm asking, commissioners thought that was the way to go. Funding for it, we've still got, I think, about $126,000 left in the Go Bond that we haven't spent. Asking for permission to use that to go after repairs on this. Unless you want to buy us a new distributor, and we're more than open to that.
Don't get greedy.
Well, I want to give you choices.
What's the longevity, though, for like the upgrade versus a new?
Probably 15 years for the equipment, is what Dave was telling us. It basically, like I say, other than the chassis, the rest of it would be new. Honestly, my thought is, I mean, our equipment's getting older. My thought is, when we go into the next Go Bond, to go after a distributor, or not a distributor, a chip seal, a chipper. It's probably going to be $200,000 to $300,000 for one of them. That'd be sometime between now and the next five years. And then the Go Bond after this next one, you know, we'd be looking at probably anywhere from seven to 10 years out on this, maybe look at a new distributor at that time. But this would bridge that gap. We did, I did check into hiring chip sealing done, and you'd spend $150,000 to have this done per year in custom rates, so.
That's not a good product.
No. No. That's just their distributor.
Comments, questions?
You do. Stuff breaks.
You got to.
I mean, you know, equipment wears out. Obviously, the most economical way is to rebuild the truck.
Didn't you say something about what you were wanting to use the Go Bond for? Wasn't that something else, though?
No.
I felt like you'd said something about that.
I mean, I came to you two, three months ago. This wasn't even in the horizon. We just wanted to make sure it was available so that we could use it in the future. So we really didn't have a year tag for it. I just knew someday something would happen, because it always does.
Entertaining a motion to, John, not replace, but repair the, it's a $84,000 compared to the, what, $360,000? That and the chassis. It's only got 30,000 mile, and the frame's still good on it.
The frame, the frame's excellent. I mean, it runs great. It's not banged up. It's in good shape. The nice thing about it, it's an international truck, and that vintage, parts are still widely available for it, so we could get anything we needed. It's pre-def. If anybody knows about def.
That's a plus, right there.
Really want a truck with that. So, you know, we have.
It's a life panel your tank, John. They're not replacing the tank, is it?
It's stainless steel. It's probably another 50, 60 years.
It's probably not a huge expense if something were to.
It wouldn't be anything like this.
You're just talking the computer and all the mechanism that hangs off the back?
Yeah, all the, everything that makes it work. New radar gun, new pumps, control systems, valves, everything.
I don't know if you have any choice.
We'll make this a motion to approve, John, the repair of the distributor. Steve made motion to approve. Randy seconded. All in favor? Six, zero. Patty abstained. You can't even get her to vote for you.
It's just like home. I think it's the wisest decision we could make on this.
Question I should know, and I don't. What's wedge?
Wedge, like paving?
You say you had the wedge was getting held up.
So.
What is wedge?
Let's just say the road's got a crown like this. They'll come in and pave and level. Wedge is wedge and level.
Thank you. I did not know what you were stating.
Yeah, so it might be out on the edge. It might be a foot thick and might be two inches thick in the center. They just try to level the road up that way.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I just have one per question. The distributor, are you pretty much done needing it this year?
Yeah, we're done chip sealing, so we've cleaned up Plaski's truck. We still got it sitting on the lot, but we just need to drive it over there and give it back to them.
In timeframe, may repair the yours over the winter?
Yeah, they would, it's, and why we went, didn't come to you sooner, obviously there wasn't a meeting, but it's going to take six weeks, once they put it in the shop, to do all the repairs. So we would have been out of the chip seal season before that it would have got fixed.
And obviously, they'll have it ready for you for next season.
Yeah, they should have it. You know, let's say Thanksgiving, and we just bring it back and we put it in the barn and.
And the money's there for next year, because last year's Go Bond's next year, so it does drag you into next year.
But we should, we should get it back this year, and
Okay.
It should work out just great.
I believe you got approval.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Any other questions for John? No, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ron, I found the information for the Beaman. Just like we're.
Go right ahead.
Thursday, October 16th, tickets will be $30 per person or $250 for a table of eight. So if you would like to go, it's fun time, and there are at least 400-plus people in lots of prizes. And it's at Grace College. So the money does.
Did you wear the pedicure?
I wore the pedicure, so lots of wild people screaming and hollering. They have 50/50 and all the fun things, so. But some of that money will go back to.
Amy, is that for, is that for Beaman House?
It's going to be.
Okay, we could probably put that in town talk.
Oh, that'd be awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll send you that.
Okay, any other? Rick, you're the last department we got here. All righty, we will move on. Got a salary ordinance update, and I will read this. And this just requires a vote. We don't have to, we don't have to do this two and three times. This is the. So it's ordinance number 08192025. Ordinance of County Fulton, Indiana, Salary Schedule and Compensation Policies for 2025. Whereas County of Fulton, Indiana is an equal opportunity employer. Whereas it is the intent of Fulton County, Indiana, to comply with applicable federal and state Indiana Employment Laws Regulations. Whereas Indiana Code 36-2-5-3, Section 3, Subsection 8, establishes a county fiscal body shall fix the compensation of officers, deputies, and other employees whose compensation is payable from the County General Fund, County Highway Fund, County Health Fund, County Park and Recreation Fund, Aviation Fund, or any other fund for which the county order issues warrants for compensation. So what this, we, and I won't read the whole ordinance, but that's the gist of it. So what this do is, we had to change for the coroner office. The three deputy coroners went from contract to county part-time employees. So it's deputy coroner, pole two, at $10,000. Correct me if I'm wrong, this is total $10,000 for three of, or a piece? Each, okay, thank you. $10,000 each. And we did that because as a contract, they could not drive the county coroner's van. And to do this, then they're able to drive the van and protect the county from, God forbid, any other lawsuits. So that being said, any questions, comments? Anyone out there? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Very moved to approve. Need a second? Steve seconded. All in favor? Six, zero, and Pete abstains. So there, we'll have to sign this as soon as I can find the right page. If you would just write abstain on your. Thank you. We will move on to transfers. First transfer is Fund 1160 for the officer recorder. Identification, transfer from Identification Security Protection Fund of $30,000. Transfer to Computer Maintenance Software and Extra Help at $30,000 total. The Identification Security Protection Fund is to be transferred to the Recorder's Perpetuation Fund to be used for redacting purposes. I was made aware of this at the Annual Recorder's Conference.
Just to be clear, that $30,000 is she wants for 2026.
That is for the.
The 2026 budget.
Okay. Did everybody hear that? So I will entertain a motion to approve this transfer. Very moved to approve. Second?
Second.
Patty seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. We don't have to sign that. The other transfer is Fund 001, Coroner's Office. Is transfer from Health Insurance, $6,000. Deputy Coroner, $9,000, and Health Insurance, $1,200. It's transfer to Appropriations OASDI of $1,200. And Deputy Coroner, $15,000. The explanation is moving Deputy Coroner from contract service to personal service. And that is something that we had approved of. I'll entertain a motion to approve that transfer. Steve move? Second? Randy seconded. All in favor? Six, zero. Pete abstained. And last but not least, County General to Network Administration. Account number 31106, office equipment, $30. To 21000, office supply, $30. Transfer of funds to cover purchased items that need to be paid out of the general fund. So I'll entertain a motion to approve. Pete moved. Second? I'm sorry, Chase?
Second, yep.
Yeah, okay, thank you. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. Okay. Hope you had a chance to read all of the minutes.
Patty did.
Patty, I'm.
Patty did a good job.
Patty, I'm going to hear the right minutes from now on. She just doesn't know it yet.
Yeah, no kidding. First, June 17th minutes. This is where we discuss the abatements and all. So I'll move, if you've all had a chance to read them. Kathy has made the corrections that Patty did say. So I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Randy moved to approve. Second? Pete seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. And these we got to sign. Next is July 15th meeting. If you recall, this is where we got the update on Mud Lake, and Carla was here with Parkview. Again, entertain a motion to approve as written. Pete moved to approve. Second? Steve seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. I think I'm losing my voice. Talked too much. This is July 23rd joint meeting with us and the commissioners, where we discuss the Go Bond with Jason Semler, and also the Comprehensive Financial Plan. So any, I will entertain a motion to approve as read. Read as written, I should say. I'm sorry. Patty moved to approve. A second? Barry seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. The next one is our first budget hearing, August 7th. Hope everyone had a chance to read it. If you did, anyone, I'll take a motion to approve as written. Pete moved to approve. Second? Patty? All in favor? Okay, there it is. All right, yes. Thank you. And last but not least, it's the final day of our initial budget hearings. Again, same thing. Anyone got any changes? I'll entertain a motion as read. Randy moved to approve. Second? Steve seconded. All in favor? Seven, zero. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to old business. Randy, any old business?
No, sir.
Chase?
Is there any update on Mud Lake or anything that we know of?
Last I heard was, no. I mean, it's basically, we're, we're waiting on the DNR to.
Yeah, they're doing the GO.
Oh, they're, okay.
Geo-technical.
We're in doing it, now they're not.
I'd love to do it for them, because I can tell them it's muck.
Yeah.
And it's all muck.
It's a few thousand dollars.
Yeah. I could use that. It's not hard to figure out. It's all muck.
But they won't take your word for it.
No, they won't. Because I'm not sure how far down the muck goes.
That's the problem.
That's the problem. So the answer to your question is not really.
Okay.
If we need to have Seth come in and give us an update on it, we'll be glad to get him in here and have him do it.
Basically, moving along. It's just not moving along very fast.
That's correct.
That's all I really wanted to know.
No, that's fine. Thank you. Barry?
Nothing in old business. I could not vote for the August statements because I was not here.
Okay.
I changed it.
All right, thank you. Patty? Steve?
No.
Steve?
No.
I have none.
No.
It's going to smell like a bird-fed cat. What's?
Because in a few days, I'm on vacation.
Okay. Okay, any old business out there? New business, Randy?
No, sir.
Chase?
No, sir.
Barry?
Sir.
Patty? Steve?
No.
No.
Okay, just for us, we have sat through two and a half, or give or take, wonderful days of budget hearings. This year's budget is doable. I do want to implore on the department heads that are here, next year's budget is going to be tight, very tight. So, we're, we're gonna get through this year first, and then we'll worry about next year, next year. But, just because money's in the budget, please be cognizant of the fact that we can't be, because we may need it to next year. So I just want to let everyone know, and I'll, when we get all of our numbers back, Kathy's gonna, after all, I'm assuming when she gets back from vacation, get all the numbers into the DLGF, have them go through it. We know they're gonna tell us, we're over, we're planning on that. And I will sit down with all department heads and discuss it, and tell them, kind of give them a heads up, not only for the twenty-six budget, but twenty-seven, and twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, I know are ways out. And I'm hoping they decide to change their minds on some things down in here. But we have to go with what they've got. So, we'll do the best we can sitting up here. And we appreciate it, and for those department heads that are here, your budgets, as they came in, for the most part, were very static. And I, we appreciate that, because there wasn't any exorbitant fluff in that. And so that's one of the things we discussed about cutting. We didn't know where we were gonna cut from, because everybody did a good job at keeping everything close to the best. So I just wanted to appreciate everyone's due diligence on that. Other than that, I don't have any more. Do you have anything? Any new business? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Chase moved to adjourn, second? Pete seconded, all in favor?